I'd like to welcome you to our September 28th City Council meeting in the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each member shall have a light of three minutes to express or to address the council unless each time is extended, such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers, and we thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices. At this time, could we please stand together? We'd like to ask Pastor Kathy Thacker from the First United Methodist Church of St. Cloud to come and deliver our invocation. Please remain standing after that for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Loving God, our Creator, thank you for this day, for the gift of life and the gift of our families and friends and our beautiful city of St. Cloud. Thank you for each person here today and for the planning and the work that has been done to prepare us for this time. We are blessed with the growth we see in our community, but we know that with that growth comes responsibility and increased demand for services. So we ask for your guidance. We thank you for the excellent departments and people in our city, for the dedication of each city employee to protect and serve our community. We thank you for our city manager Veronica Miller, our mayor Nathan Blackwell, deputy mayor Colby Urban, and council members Ken Gilbert, Sean, and Lynette Matheny. Tonight, we ask for your wisdom and guidance for direction in all that we do may we make wise decisions for the economic development, financial stability, and the services for our public, for the benefit of all of our citizens. Help us to work together and to provide a safe and healthy environment and to plan for our future generations. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Blackwell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Matheny.
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
Last our city manager, if there are any agenda updates.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no updates this evening.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll have a presentation of Employee of the Month by David Kastner.
Good evening, everyone. This is one of the times in work that we really enjoy being able to pass on thanks to some of our employees. Eric Vasquez, he's the driver collector for the solid waste department, part of the Public Works Division. And his Employee of the Month nomination couldn't come at more observing time, I guess. Next month is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month for the month of October. Now, his actions did take place in August, but it's still pretty fitting. I'll just get into it here. I'll read what Eric is being nominated for. Last month in August, while on a residential garbage collection route, Eric Vasquez witnessed what appeared to be a domestic issue between a male and a female. A female pedestrian who had noticed walking down the street and seemed to be being harassed by a male. Noticing this, Eric slowed down his vehicle and made his presence known to them as well as pointing at his onboard camera. We have cameras facing forward on all of our garbage trucks now, in which the camera was recording the incident. Once noticed, the male subject backed away from the female and allowed the female to continue on her destination down the street. Eric pulled over immediately and reported this to his supervisor, who in return immediately notified the St. Cloud Police Department. Eric's statement, as well as a copy of the video, was turned over to the St. Cloud Police Department. Although the incident itself is still under investigation, the Police Department does in fact believe that Eric did stop a domestic violence issue between the two parties and quite possibly an abduction. So it's pretty serious. So Eric's actions that day do reflect on his commitment to always going above and beyond for his job, and we're all so proud of him in being part of our team. So Eric, thank you so much.
Real quick, I didn't expect to be recognized for being at the right place at the right time, but I thank you for that. Just wanted to mention, I believe it's Matthew 23, Matthew 22, 37 through 40, where Jesus says, "You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart and with all your soul and with all your mind." This is the great first commandment, and the second is like it. You shall love your neighbor as yourself. And I think loving your neighbor as yourself is very important. So you see something, say something, do something, or call somebody who will do something. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is our citizens forum. to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as practical thereafter the person addresses the council. When you come forward, please state your name and address to the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Would anyone like to speak during the citizens forum? If not, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine or non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now's the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they won't be given the same opportunity. Okay. City manager, you're not pulling any items tonight, or you have any?
No, I'm not.
Thank you very much. Is anyone on the council wishing to address a particular item on the consent agenda? If not, could I entertain a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda? Would anyone in the audience like to speak to the consent agenda? Sorry about that. If not, could I entertain a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have motion from Councilmember Matheny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
That brings us to public hearings. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number one?
Final public hearing for resolution number 2023-153R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing a final ad valorem tax millage for the City of St. Cloud for the fiscal year 2023-2024, the same being adopted prior to the adoption of the final budget for said period.
Good evening, Jeff Cooper, Finance Director. This is our final ad valorem tax millage resolution. As per Florida statute 200.065, two public hearings are required in order to adopt a final ad valorem tax millage of our proposed 5.1128, which is 11.14% above the rolled-back rate of 4.6005. The rolled-back rate is the same tax dollars assessed as the previous tax year, not including new construction measured as a millage rate. This ensures the increase in taxable values in existing properties is not considered for ad valorem tax. The key takeaways, as you can see, the millage rate is the amount of tax payable per dollar of assessed value of property. As used in property tax, one mil is equal to $1 in property tax levied per $1,000 of a property's assessed value. Governments set millage rates based on the total value of property within their jurisdiction. Property taxes are calculated by multiplying the assessed taxable value by the millage rate and dividing by 1,000. We'll do the example on the next page. Actually, it's two pages. We'll get to this example in one moment. This is a history of our millage rate. This will be the 11th consecutive year that we have not raised our millage rate. It's been at 5.1128. This is the 11th year. As you can see, the red line tracks what would have been the rolled-back rate. And here's a simplified example. With our proposed millage rate of 5.1128, if the average property tax value of $250,000, so that becomes 250 times 5.1128, which is $1,278. If we were to adopt the rolled-back rate, it would save the taxpayer approximately $128. These are the highlights of the services funded by city property taxes. Of course, the major thing is public safety, law enforcement, fire and emergency medical services, other medical services, roads and streets, the roads, walkways, lighting, and the community-related items, particularly the parks and recreation, cemeteries, and community development, buildings and licensing, planning, urban design, and sustainability. So 5.1128 is needed to fund this year's budget. The 11.4% increase in personnel costs is due to the following items. 1% cost to living increase for all non-union employees, 3% pay adjustment plus longevity pay adjustment. This cost also does include the new police department union contract is in that figure as well. Three new general fund-funded positions, 266,000. Those are two police officers and one victims advocate for the police department, which is a new position. Increase in health insurance cost of 603,000. That's approximately a 9% increase from previous year. And an increase in pension contribution costs of 1,176,899. The majority of that is attributable to the police and fire pension as those costs continue to rise. Staff recommendation is approval of resolution 2023-153R, and city council requested action is approval of resolution 2023-153R. And if there are any questions, let me know.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have comments or a motion by council. If not, we'll have comments or a motion by council.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Clerk, please read item number two.
Final public hearing for resolution number 2023-154R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing a final budget for the City of St. Cloud for the fiscal year 2023-2024, the same being adopted following the adoption of the final millage rate for the said period.
Jeff Cooper, Finance Director, as the background indicates, as per Florida statute 166.241, the city is required to adopt a budget each fiscal year by ordinance or resolution. The amount available from taxation and other sources, including balances brought forward from prior fiscal years, must equal the total appropriations for expenditures and reserves. In other words, the adopted budget must balance. Here's a breakdown of our total budget by fund. This is for revenues, 191.9 million. Our biggest fund is our general fund, of course, 69.5 million or 36.2%. Our special revenue funds are 44.3 million, 23.1%. And then our enterprise funds are 45.9 million, 23.9%. I won't go through the others, but just to note on the enterprise funds, $22 million of that is budget to transfer, transfer the remaining water and sewer impact fee funds to Toho. We're down to 20-plus million dollars, so next year, our budget will likely go down again as it did this year. So that's revenues. Expenditures, of course, budget has to balance is the same, 191.9 million. Just to note, as compared to our current year budget after budget amendments, this is 43.3% less than prior years. The majority of that is because we no longer budget for the water fund, the sewer fund, and the water and sewer impact fees are only budgeted at 10 and 12 million respectively instead of the many millions that they were budgeted this fiscal year. Any questions on the total budget? This is the budgeted revenues by type. So budgeted revenue, reserves is 35.1 million, 18%. General government, 37.6 million or 20%. And what's the other big one there? 40.1 million for, which one's that? Can't see the colors very well. From other sources, 44.4 million for charges for services. Those are the main revenue types. This is for the general fund specifically. The general fund budget is 69.5 million. We utilized 7.5 million worth of prior year fund balance to balance this year's budget, which is continuing to decline over previous years. Just as a reference, three years ago when I got here, it was over $10 million. So we've tried to reduce that amount, and we'll continue to do so. Our ad valorem proceeds are 22.2 million. That is an increase of approximately 3.9 million. About half of that is due to new construction, and half of that is due to increased evaluations. So that's where that comes from. The other ones, 19.4 million in other taxes, and 58.7, 8.7 million. Which one's that for? Sorry, I'm getting lost here. I have a hard time. Intergovernmental revenue is what that is. Okay. We'll go on to expenditures. This is expenditure by function. The main one here is, of course, public safety, 37.1 million of our 69.5 million is attributable to public safety. That is 54%. That is pretty much in line with other municipalities. The other one is 19 million or 28% for general government services. That's basically for the rest of us, support services. Parks and recreation is separated out. Transportation is your community development department. And reserves is your city council contingency, which is a half a million in case of emergency. This is our capital projects budget for FY 23-24, by project and by funding source. So we have Project IT 2200, which is network security and software, for an additional $125,000 out of the 120 fund for some additional cybersecurity improvements. PR 1906 is the trail extension Lakefront to Chisholm, 1,334,000 from parks impact fees. PR 2301, Chisholm Park Master Plan, 3.5 million, also parks impact fees. PR 2302, Hopkins Park Master Plan, 350,000, parks impact fees as well. Project PS 2104, Fire Station 32 rebuild, 5.8 million. That is coming from the 120 fund. We are proud of the fact that we're building this fire station without the use of debt. PS 2401, PD Communication Center, 1 million. That is coming from our police impact fee funds. That's the initial design work for that new facility. That'll be phase one of our public safety complex, hopefully. ST 2401, that's our annual master paving project, 1.2 million. That's funded with the gas tax. ST 2402, ADA improvements, 500,000. That is being funded with mobility fees. ST 2303, that's the 10th Street Complete Streets, 765,000, mobility impact fees. ST 2304, Michigan Avenue Pedestrian Project, 150,000, mobility impact fees. ST 2305, Massachusetts Avenue Extension, 520,000, mobility impact fees. ST 2306, Creekwood Drive Extension, 1 million, mobility impact fees. ST 2307, 17th Street Extension, 1,015,000, mobility impact fees. And finally, ST 2308, Fifth Street Upgrades, 360,000, mobility impact fees. So as you can see, there's a lot of work going on, work to come. We made great progress in completing projects that are currently in project, in progress. So we're trying to get those projects completed and any remaining funds freed up for additional projects. So our total was 17,654,286. And that completes our budget resolution. So our staff recommendation is approval of 2023-154R, and city council requested action is also approval of resolution 2023-154R.
Thank you. We'd certainly like to thank all of the staff for all the hard work they did putting together this budget. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have comment and/or motion by council. Councilmember Gilbert.
Coop, thank you for all you do. One thing I enjoyed hearing, the Finance Director, there's no interim, so that's good. We really enjoy you, and you do a great job. So thank you for all your contributions to the city.
I appreciate that. It's weird to say it.
I thought I heard it, and I had to write it down.
It's almost been three months.
I know. And we appreciate you. The Fifth Street, we're talking about the 360. Is that the improvements to doing the stop signs and making that an east-west thoroughfare? Or what is those monies directed for, sir?
That's a Mr. Felbinger question.
Okay. I'll just go through the city manager for that. We'll talk about it later.
I don't know all the specifics on that.
Okay.
I think we did budget conceptually. We need to do a workshop to bring you the results of that, but I believe that's what that is.
I appreciate it. I know that was brought up a few months ago to do some east-west traffic alleviation or at least to take the pressure off. So that was my only question. But again, it was so nice to hear that without the interim. So thank you for all you do, sir.
If there's no other comments, could I have a motion for the adoption of our budget?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please read items three, four, and five into the record.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-42, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately 25.59 acres identified as Walker Property located south of Chisholm Park Trail, west of South Narcousie Road, north of Old Oak Trail, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-43, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation, LDR, low-density residential to approximately 25.59 acres identified as Walker Property located south of Chisholm Park Trail, west of South Narcousie Road, north of Old Oak Trail, providing for amending of the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effect, subraibility, copies on files, and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-44, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of PUD planned unit development compatible with the low-density residential future land use designation change adopted by ordinance number 2022-43 for approximately 25.59 acres identified as Walker Property located south of Chisholm Park Trail, west of South Narcousie Road, north of Old Oak Trail, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, providing for approval of the preliminary master plan, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, subraibility, and effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland, Community Development Director. Before I get started on my presentation, the school district asked us to hand out the school capacity report for the projects on the agenda tonight. I did email them very late this afternoon, but I'm also going to hand a paper copy to the clerk.
Thank you.
Okay. The cases before you tonight are for the annexation, comprehensive plan amendment, planned unit development zoning, including the preliminary and final master plan for the project known as the Walker Property. The properties are contiguous to the existing city limits and abuts the city limits on the western property boundary of the project. The property has an existing county future land use designation of low-density residential. The proposed future land use is low-density residential for the city as well. The existing county zoning is R1 and RS1C, urban settlement and rural settlement, and the proposed zoning for the city is planned unit development. The total net developable area is 25.59 acres, and the existing county future land use of low-density residential would allow up to eight dwelling units per acre, which could be up to 204 dwelling units. The proposed city future land use would be planned unit development. Their maximum density would be four dwelling units per acre, which is a potential of 102 dwelling units. However, they are proposing 69 units. Here are graphic representations of the future land use and zoning maps for context. The proposed PUD will consist of 69 front-loaded, single-family detached homes. The lots will range from 75 to 62 and 1/2 feet wide, and the gross residential density is 2.70. This will be a single-phase development, and they will provide an extension of the multipurpose trail to Narcousie, and they will provide an active recreation area, tot lot, and dog park. The enhanced landscaping buffer will be high. They'll have high buffer plantings within the buffers along Chisholm Park Trail and Albany Avenue, and they'll provide future access connections to the abutting roads. Here's a graphic representation of the preliminary and final master plan depicting the lot layout, the locations of the amenities, access, and stormwater management areas. All the lots north of Street A are a minimum of 75 feet wide. DRC recommends approval of ordinance number 2022-42 and 43. However, we recommend approval with conditions of ordinance number 2022-44. The following conditions must be satisfied prior to final approval of the subdivision construction plans, and I'll go ahead and read them into the record. The first one is that they will provide The first one is that they will provide written approval from Osceola County Transportation and Transit on the entrance and access to and from Narcusi Road. The, the lots south of Chisholm Park Trail, north of Street A, and west of Albany Avenue will be a minimum of seventy-five feet in width. All buffers shall include high buffer plantings pursuant to LDC figure eight point four point one. Rights of way shall be provided for all stub outs to ensure future roadway access connection to, to city standards. The applicant shall comply with Page Six of the preliminary and final master plan submittal, which includes the revised plan requested by City Council subject to these conditions of approval. And where any discrepancies or conflicts with Page Six requirements are discovered within the preliminary or final master plan, documents Page Six requirements shall apply subject to these conditions of approval. And the required split rail fence shall be located in an easement or tract and be maintained in perpetuity by the homeowner's association's successor and assigns. Planning Commission recommended approval of both ordinance numbers twenty-twenty-two dash four-two and four-three, and there was a tie vote on ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash four-four. It is requested that City Council approve ordinance numbers twenty-twenty-two dash four-two and four-three and approve with conditions as stated by staff, ordinance number twenty-twenty-two dash forty-four. Staff and the applicants are available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Would the developer like to speak to the side? Items.
Good evening, Jill Thacker, Seventeen South Orlando Avenue, Kissimmee. As Ms. Dunkland presented, we did resubmit a plan that addressed the concerns that were raised by the council at the last meeting. What I'd like to, there was one thing on the conditions that I would like to just make sure. It says high, high buffer. I think the high buffer is along Chisholm Park Trail and Albany Avenue. The rest is a, I think, a medium buffer. But I just want to clarify that. The other thing that I wanted to clarify is that in the recreational area where the pool is, there will be a cabana with bathrooms. I think there was a concern about a clubhouse there, and so we're willing to just do the cabana and pool if that is, so we wanted to put that on the record as well. We, I would love to be able to address comments from the public. I'm hoping that we can address any concerns that you all have as well after the public comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I'd like to turn my three minutes over to Jackie, if that's all right with you.
We don't do that, ma'am. She can speak to the, to the council when her time comes, okay?
All right. I, I haven't been here very much. I live at forty-eight thirty Old Oak Trail in Runnymede Oaks. I live on one acre, and I don't really appreciate these small lots and all this dog parks and so forth, because there is a park, Chisholm Park, right next door that they can utilize. And I think that the exit should be at Chisholm Park Road, In-N-Out, and no exit or entrance on Albany, because those people that live on that have larger lots than I do. And the buffer in the lots, eighty-five foot, we'd like lots eighty-five foot, a minimum. And that would be not quite comparable to my one-acre lot and the others on my street. And as far as a burn and trees and so forth, you've putting large trees on the other sides of the lots. What about Old Oak Trail? We have very expensive homes in our subdivision, not small lots. And this is just not acceptable to me and my family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Brian Bennett.
Brian Bennett, eleven twenty-five Albany Avenue. Seems like we've been talking about this for a long time, and it's the same issues over and over. It's the size of the lots, trying to get the lots comparable to the size of the rest of homes in the area, trying to make it feel more like country and not in, inside the middle of city. The rest of the neighborhood is like that. My chief complaint, all along, has been the use of Albany Avenue. I would much prefer it if they would put the exit out onto Chisholm Park Trail and just not, not do the development there. You guys have heard me say that over and over. But it, it still stands even with the, with the new PUD. I would, I would love to see the, the traffic get routed out onto Chisholm Park Trail and not onto Albany Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Felix Cicardo?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
I have accessing my.
You'll step up and state your name and address for the record, sir.
Felix Cicardo, forty-eight seventy-eight Main, Runnymede Oaks. I'm extending my three minutes to Ms.
No, you can't do that, sir. You need to speak, and they can come up and they'll have three minutes, okay?
Well, I'm, I'm totally against the building.
Thank you, sir.
As I've heard, as the lady said, most of us next door to this area live in a one-acre properties for the longest. That's what we're accustomed to, and due to the high traffic situation that's developing right now, it's going to get worse, having these many more houses being built in the area. To me, that's a no-no. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Felix. Candida Cicardo?
I have to exclude her. She's not able to speak.
Okay, I'm just assuming she's against the development, so.
That's my, my.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Betty Damke?
I must say, this meeting has moved faster than any other that I've ever attended. Usually, we're a couple hours down the road. People are going to trust you tonight. I just want to give a little bit of a recap. This revised master plan and the special conditions that have been added are major improvements, and we appreciate them, especially the larger lots and removing the parking along Albany Avenue. And I didn't tell you my name, Betty Damke, forty-seven seventy-six Eight-Ninth Strip.
Thank you.
There are a few other concerns that we'd like to address. Others will speak to them more in depth. The first one is, as just mentioned, relocating the entrance from Albany Avenue to Chisholm Park Trail. This would result in a better traffic flow, not only for the existing community, but for the new residents that will be moving into this community, and it will reduce some of the traffic that would be going out onto Albany. The second is eliminate the sidewalk on the east side of Albany Avenue, rather than having sidewalks on both sides. Eliminate the east side, which I believe can be done, if y'all agree, and ensuring that the trees and the natural foliage that currently exist there remain. And the results of this would result in privacy for the homeowners, and it would help the developer, he doesn't have to put this sidewalk in on that side, so it'll help his expenditures. The third is, under the Narcusi overlay, vinyl fencing is not standard, is not approved. Split, the split, a post and rail, yes, absolutely. What has happened with this is the post and rail has been put in by the developers, and then individual homeowners can erect on their property this, the vinyl fencing, which, if you drive through any of the subdivisions, you see this now. Fourth, for the homes that will be abutting Chisholm Park Trail and Albany Avenue, I know in the staff review, they said there would be two stories. We're requesting one story. This gives privacy to the existing community, and it also looks better from the road as you drive down Chisholm Park Road. And lastly, ensure that all construction traffic enters and exits from Highway fifteen. Albany Avenue, even under construction, cannot take it, nor can Chisholm Park Trail. As you know, this is a PUD, and you have the authority to instigate whatever you choose. And when you do make your motion, whatever it might be, please remember to include any of these extras.
Thank you, Betty. James Bishop, are you wishing to speak?
Not really, sir.
Okay, thanks, sir. Jackie? Could you state your name and address for the record, Jackie?
Yes, Mayor. Jackie Frione, forty-eight seventy-two Chisholm Park Trail. Good evening, council. What you have in front of you is a petition that had been circulating, Chisholm Park Trail, Chisholm Estates, Runnymede Oaks, Jay Street, and Chisholm Park Road. All the residents that opposed these sixty-two and a half-foot lots have signed the petition. We agree there has been progress made on these lots, but the residents of Runnymede Oaks, as you can see on the overhead, also deserve the same consideration. The majority of the homes there are stated are one-acre lots. We believe that the best compatible solution would be the seventy-five-foot lots and a mixture of eighty-five-foot wide lots. This allows for a well-balanced variety of compatible lots surrounding these estate home sites. As we have stated, the eighty-five-foot minimum is also the minimum lot size at Chisholm Estates, which is also LDR. The larger lots allow for added structures to improve a person's property values, such as adding their own swimming pools, decks, sheds, and et cetera. The builder states on his website that core values of this company is doing the right thing for the right reasons. That's exactly what we have been stating from the beginning. This small area at Chisholm Park is a great asset to the city and to the builder, and we all know the potential here for a grand upscale estate-type community. The standards should be maintained, or higher, not lowered, with sixty-two and a half-foot lots. We believe that everyone here tonight would agree to do the right thing for the right reasons, especially here at Chisholm Park. We have stated all of our concerns at previous meetings, and we hope the council will address these tonight. I have one special condition as stated by someone else, that all construction traffic would enter only at Narcusi Road, ingress and egress, from site to completion of the project. No impact to Chisholm Park Trail. I think everybody here understands the concerns of the community, but as you can see on your overhead, all of the properties that border on Old Oak Trail, there is one lot, that if we can slide that over to the right a little, you will see the only seventy-five-foot lot there is number seventeen. It's seventy-five feet wide. He spoke before stating that he's trying to buy additional property from the owner to the right, because he can't even pull in all of his vehicles and his RV on his seventy-five-foot wide lot. It's number seventeen. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Jackie. Gary?
Yeah, I'm Gary Baggett, forty-eight twenty-five Old Oak Trail. Our property is adjacent to this development, and there is a cul-de-sac that's platted right on our property line. Well, we'll have car lights coming through our house at all hours of the night, so we're very much opposed of that. And there's also a hiking trail which is proposed along our boundary, and we really don't want that, as it's going to be trashed on our property, and it'll be an ongoing problem from day one. And also, like, we all are opposed to sixty-two-foot lots, they don't fit there at all. And eighty-five foot is really not big enough, and they really ought to be a hundred foot. But that's not going to happen, and we get that. So, but anyway, we're, me and all the rest of us, we are very much opposed to these sixty-two-foot lots. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Sandra? Sandra Jennings?
My name is Sandra Jennings, eleven thirty-five Albany Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida, three four seven seven one. As I'm sure you all know at this point, two sides of my almost five-acre property is borderline with this Walker Property. My, I'd like to just again repeat the same, eighty-five-foot lots, to me, should be the minimum of what is going in on this subdivision. I would like the entrance to the property to be directly across from Chisholm Estates on Chisholm Park Trail, as well as Narcusi Road. That's sufficient. Two entrances on that property should be sufficient. And the, I'm, I'm more than happy with the, if, if you would keep the improvements to Albany Avenue to be on the Walker Property side and not improve the other side as far as any sidewalks and gutters or anything like that. The road is sufficient for what our use is. We've, I've lived on that property for over twenty-six years. And so I would also, for the record, like to state that I am in agreement with the written documentation that Jackie and Betty Damke have provided to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Does anyone else in the audience have something else you'd like to add? Anyone else that hasn't spoken? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion. No, we won't do that. We won't let you come back and speak again, I'm sorry. Getting ahead of myself.
Real quick, I just want to address a couple of things.
Please do.
Albany is already a platted road, and so we have to improve it no matter what. We did take off the on-street parking, as Betty Damke mentioned. If, if you don't want us to put a sidewalk on one side, we won't. It's, it, that's up to you. We're fine with having the construction traffic come off of Narcusi. And on the cul-de-sac, we did move that cul-de-sac a little bit back, and there will be a buffer, a, a landscape buffer even along there, so the lights from the cars in that cul-de-sac will not go through until that road is connected, so their buffer is there and it's landscaped. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
At this time, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Would anyone like to speak? Well, then we're ready to vote. On our. On item number three.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. It's your line, I'm sorry. Mr. Fletcher?
This question is for staff regarding architectural design standards for the development. I know that we adopt a new architectural design standards. I want to confirm that this development will be in compliance with those architectural design standards as adopted previously.
That is correct. Staff reviewed them, and they do meet all of our residential architectural standards.
And the ordinance requires them to follow our residential architectural standards.
Right. We basically copied and pasted it into the ordinance.
Okay. And then, can I get clarification on the mounted buffer, like, the height of the mounted buffer, or the buffering on the plan?
How tall the buffer is?
Yeah.
Five feet? Hold on one second. Sorry.
I was trying not to speak tonight, but I'm John Adams, R.J. Woodin Associates, 316 Church Street, Kissimmee, Florida, the planners for the project. The berm is 25 feet wide, or, excuse me, the buffer is 25 feet wide with three to one slopes for maintenance purposes. Our berm will be a minimum of three feet, but on top of that will be the hedge planting requirements plus the large trees and the medium trees.
And a high buffer, and that's going to run along Chisholm? Where's, that's going to run?
Along Chisholm Park Trail.
And then down Albany?
On the west side of Albany Avenue. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we have the medium buffer along the south property line, and on the northeastern appendage, we've got the medium buffer requirements.
But there's, there's no mounted on the?
On the medium buffer, no, sir. We're not proposing a berm.
Okay. All right, that's all I have at the moment. Thank you.
Mr. Urban, Councilmember Urban?
I just wanted to say, I would be okay with eliminating the sidewalk on the other side of Albany Avenue for those residents. If the rest of the Council is, I want to give them as much space as possible for that. And I wanted to officially add a condition to do all the construction entrance traffic off of Narcoucy Road. I know that was mentioned as well. And then, my one other request, I guess for the applicant, I know they have the medium berm on this, I'm not sure what this area is called. It goes down Albany Ave and then abuts the other residents there. Is there any way in that particular area, it can also be the high buffer, just in that area as well?
I want to make sure I understand. Is this what you're talking about?
Yes, that area.
Yes, that's fine.
Are you through?
Yes.
Do we have any other comment from Council? What's your motion regard, your pleasure concerning the annexation, item number 2022-42?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Fletcher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Same as Councilmember Gilbert. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Brings us to item number four, ordinance number 2022-43. What is the pleasure of the, do I have a motion for the adoption?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Fletcher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
And regard to ordinance number 2022-44?
Motion to approve adding special condition that lots number 1, 2, 3, 4, 12 through 18, 20 through 23, and 24 be at 75 foot lot width.
You want to clarify that again, make sure we're all on the same page here?
Motion to approve, making sure that the lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 12 through 18, 20 through 23, and 24 are at 75 foot lot width. It's basically the southern, along Old Oak Trail.
Would you like to speak to that? I'll give you just a second, what he's asking.
We spent a lot of time trying to increase the lots above Avenue A to 75, and in the PUD, making concessions and coming back with the 62 and 1/2 on those lots. If we were going just a straight zoning, it would be the, you know, 62 and 1/2. So we're trying to come to a compromise here, and we would request that the Council approve the site plan that was submitted.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have any other discussion?
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify also the condition of approval that staff is recommending for?
Can we hang on a second? You have a motion on the floor.
Yes.
Make sure we get it, we get it before we go any further. Can we see if there's a second to that motion?
Okay. Do I have a second to Mr. Fletcher's motion?
Just to clarify, I thought if it was straight zoning, it would be all 75 foot lots?
Well, so, if we could, I'm sorry.
We're not doing a straight zoning.
So, Mayor, if you just, there was no second to that motion?
Right.
Okay, all right.
That's what I need to know first. There's no second to that motion, so that motion fails. Now I'll let you speak.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that our condition number three is to have high buffer plantings in all of the buffers, so if Council does not wish to have that, then we will need to amend that condition.
All right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Urban, so did you have another question?
Yeah, Mr. Urban, you have, you have a question?
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things, and no other questions for now. Thank you.
Do we have a motion for the adoption of the final item? 2022-44, Councilmember Fletcher?
So, the reason why I came up with the motion that I did is because I know we've been going back and forth. We've been working on this project for well over a year. And in my opinion, you know, as, you know, other members of the Council have said, this is one of the most precious, obviously, areas of our city as we go through and try to create an amazing park over at Chisholm Park. I do not believe that what has been submitted, yes, we've come a long way. I understand, like, we've turned houses around on Albany Avenue, we've added the pedestrian trail, we've removed the parking, like, we've gone back and, we've got the entrance on Narcoucy Road, and we've made, you know, we've met with folks after folks after folks. I just think if we're able to get 75 foot lot lines, especially on the perimeter where it abuts a significant section in neighborhood that are one acre lots, like, if this was a large 200 acres, I could understand. But there is no developer that's going to come in and buy 50 one acre lots and build a community. So all I'm asking for is where these folks have one acre lot homes to be protected so that they don't have a ton of houses in their backyard. I'm even, I mean, I came into this, into this meeting tonight saying, I'm like, I don't want, I think it should all be 75 foot lots. But I'm even willing, in my motion, which obviously failed, to, you know, just do where it abuts on Old Oak Trail. I don't think that that's too much to ask for. So that's, that's my comments and where I'm at. And, you know, this is just trying to work with the developer, work with, you know, the planners, the attorney, the residents. We've been here many, many, many times discussing this, and here we are. So that's, I mean, that's just my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Mr. Urban?
Again, I agree with Councilmember Fletcher. This is a, in my opinion, a high-quality area of our city, one of our most precious natural resources. This is an area that can support a higher-quality neighborhood like this. I don't know what, what was your original motion, Sean?
So my, my original motion was a motion for approval, and it, in switching the, we're having the lots 1, 2, and 3, which are on the far right, 1, 2, 3, and then the lots 12 through 18, so that's the southern side of Street D by Old Oak Trail, so that whole row, 20 through 23, which comes down where they, where they were talking about the fencing, right? And then 24. So if you want, again, I said I wasn't even, like, my opinion was I wanted 75, but if they want to put 75 foot lots all the way around the water management pond, go ahead. But at least the folks in Old Oak Trail, or in that, that neighborhood, were, were protected. And then you had, you had discussed, you know, removing the sidewalk. I would be okay with removing the sidewalk. They've already flipped the houses for the folks along Albany, right? So, you know, we've, we've worked with, with those folks there. I think we've worked with everybody.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. One thing I'd like to remind you all, in a straight zoning of 75 foot, there wouldn't be buffers, there wouldn't be the architectural standards that we've agreed to. So that's part of that compromise that I was talking about, that they've agreed to the architectural standards, and what they've done is recognize the buffers along the existing homes. So I think that, you know, within the nicer homes and the buffers and everything, hopefully that they will be good neighbors to those that are there. And so that's, that's why we're, we're asking for the site plan that was presented.
Our City Manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the ideas that was just brought up was the potential of not including the sidewalk on the eastern boundary of Albany, and I would request that if the City Council does move forward with that condition, that they be required to put that amount of funding in our sidewalk escrow fund, which is a, is a common practice. If somebody doesn't put in a sidewalk, it allows us to put it in in the future.
It'll come in later. All right. Any other discussion? Councilmember Urban?
I mean, I certainly sympathize with what Sean is saying. I, this, I, the reason that I fought for the conditions that I brought to the last meeting is because I do feel this is a high-quality development, and I feel like we have made a lot of concessions. We've been working on this over a year now. I don't, I don't know if there's any other discussion with Council, but, or if the applicant has anything else to add, but is there any? I don't know, that's all I have.
You know, for me, this is a frustrating thing, you know? No matter how you vote, no, not, you're not going to make everybody happy. What I, I'm frustrated that we have a developer that has come and has had to deal with this, getting things approved for over a year. I understand the frustration of people that live close by, that feel like they're going to be impacted by the changes in this property. You know, again, I understand your concerns, but, you know, this developer certainly has the right to buy this land, to develop this land, and as long as they meet all the code requirements that are set by the law, they followed all the codes, they've met all the codes, and they've made concessions they didn't have to make as far as, you know, if they'd stayed with the original thing. And, you know, it's nice to hear the, some of the residents come up, say, we appreciate the changes they've made, the improvements to the landscaping, the changes in some of the lot, a significant amount of the lot sizes. And so I, they've given, and I think they've given significantly, and I think we need to go ahead and move ahead and approve this with the conditions. I don't think it's a good idea to not put in that sidewalk. I think you'll regret it later. I think it's a contribute, it will contribute to the, to the community. I, it will help buffer those properties from the road. I think that would be a mistake not to put the sidewalk on that side. They'll have grandkids, they'll, other people along those properties, people will be wanting to use a, just for transportation's sake. That would not be wise, in my opinion. We certainly need to make sure we specify, we did specify, did we not, a high buffer? And then you agreed to that? Are, are there any other discussions from this Council? Then I move the adoption of the final ordinance here, 2022-44, with the conditions that we did specify, the high buffer, and what else? Was there any other, the conditions that you had laid out?
The construction entrance.
Oh, the construction?
Right, construction entrance from Narcoucy.
Are we eliminating the sidewalk or no?
I'm, and I'm not recommending eliminating that sidewalk in this motion. I think that would be a mistake personally, unless a majority of the Council wants to do that.
I would be in favor of that, but obviously, I'm just one person.
I would be in favor of that as well.
Okay, we have two? Okay, not enough. Do I have a second?
I would second with those conditions, the construction entrance off of Narcoucy. Are there no budging on the, the other lot sizes? Is that, that's not in this motion?
I think they have. No, it's not in the motion.
Okay. Well, I would second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Nay.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Nay with the fact that this is inconsistent with the development pattern in that area.
Councilmember Matheny?
No.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion fails.
May I address the Council?
Yes, you may.
So what we've done tonight is annex this property and given it a land use of low-density residential and failed to allow it to move forward as, as a quality neighborhood. So I guess what we would come back with is 75 foot lots, straight zoning, that have none of these things in there. And, you know, I would ask if the Council would reconsider, or what, what would, what are you looking for if, is it just straight zoning that we would be able to, I mean, I guess with the low-density residential, that would?
Mr. Manzares?
I'm just going to point out, obviously, you've given some direction, and I don't know if the applicant has received enough direction to decide where they move next, but under the city's Land Development Code, if a property is annexed and if the, the land use is assigned, it does automatically, by virtue of the code, get a zoning classification. I'm not sure which one it is. I apologize, I don't have that in front of me. I think it's RE. Is that what it is for this?
I believe it's R1, but I'd have to check the code.
All right, which means it could, project could go back as, with a straight zoning as, as Mrs. Stackers pointed out. And I think the Council understood that when you made your motion and dealt with that. I don't, I'm not, I guess my point is, I'm not sure today, tonight, what, how much more discussion could have with regard to this. They're entitled to zone the property within accordance with the, their permitted zoning classification. The code provides for that, and they can bring back a plan consistent with that.
Any other discussion, question? Brings us to item number six.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2023-46, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending and restating all sections of the city's employee handbook, providing for separability, conflict, and effective date.
Good evening, Justin Kriester, Human Resources Director. The employee handbook revisions for you tonight reflect a shift in how we calculate overtime under the Federal Fair Labor Standards Act when an employee uses paid leave time like vacation and holiday. Currently, our policy allows paid leave hours, counts that as hours worked for overtime calculations, which can lead to unintended consequences like higher overtime costs and administrative challenges. The proposed change aims to clarify this practice- The proposed change aims to clarify this practice, ensuring accurate overtime calculations, aligning our policies with best practices in the law, all while saving the city approximately $250,000. This policy change is intended for general status employees. Additionally, there are two minor benefit changes in the handbook, which update current practices and offer insurance to new hires earlier, shortening that window from 60 days to 30 days, which helps make the transition of the city much smoother. City staff recommends approval of this item. Available for questions if you have any.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion or a motion by council.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Gilbert, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Next item on our agenda is council action. Bring before us item number one, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 2023-204R, a resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud of Osceola County, Florida, providing notice to the public of a pending ordinance and directing staff to develop and process for adoption, and ordinance to provide for certification of compliance of affordable housing projects and other potential land development regulations addressing affordable housing, mixed-use, and multifamily projects to address the impacts of chapter 2027-17 laws of Florida known as Live Local Act.
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland, Community Development Director. Excuse me. Recent amendments to state law effective July 1st will preempt some provisions of the city's local comprehensive plan, zoning, and land development regulations for certain lands. The new law requires that the city adopt rules and procedures to implement the new laws, namely, accepting, review, and approval of applications. The city cannot regulate the use, density, or height of an affordable housing development if a proposed project rental, rental, sorry, if a proposed rental project is multifamily or mixed-use residential in area, any areas owned for commercial, industrial, or mixed-use. If at least 40% of the units are affordable for households up to 120% AMI for at least 30 years, and if the project is mixed-use, has at least 65% residential. However, the legislation does not articulate how to, how a proposed development is intended to evidence compliance with the affordable housing requirements necessary to benefit from these preemptions afforded under this law. Local governments cannot require development authorized under this preemption to obtain any additional approvals, such as zoning, land use changes, special exceptions, conditional uses, variances, comp plan amendments for use, density, or height. So let's just talk about the use, density, and height for a moment. Starting with the height, if someone applies for a, an affordable housing project under the Live Local Act, we have to allow up to the maximum height within a radius of one mile from that project. And regarding density, we have to allow the highest density for residential in any zoning district. And for use, we have to allow the affordable housing project in any zone that is commercial, industrial, or mixed-use. What the city can continue to regulate includes things such as setbacks, parking concurrency, maximum lot coverage, environmental regulations, et cetera. So, if a proposed project satisfies all other existing land development regulations for multifamily developments and is otherwise consistent with the comprehensive plan, the project must be administratively approved. Local governments must consider reducing the parking if they are within one-half mile of a major transit stop. I would like to reiterate that if a project meets the criteria of the Live Local Act, as well as those things stated there, and traffic, other issues, that we are not preempted. We have to approve it at staff level, and we cannot require any additional variances. Okay? So, more on the background here. The state requires that local governments adopt a inventory of properties that are suitable for affordable housing. And they use the word appropriate for use for affordable housing, but basically, it doesn't require that affordable housing is developed on the property. We can develop affordable housing on that property, but you can also sell it and then use the proceeds towards affordable housing, or lease it for affordable housing benefit. And we are currently doing that inventory. We will bring a resolution to the next council meeting on those properties once staff and city management have finalized the inventory list. Okay? So this resolution directs staff to prepare an ordinance to create city code or land development regulations as applicable to require evidence of and ensure compliance with the affordable housing criteria as needed for a development to benefit from the preemptions afforded under this law and any other land development regulations addressing affordable housing, mixed-use, and multifamily projects. The goal is to have such pending ordinance considered and adopted within six months from the effective date of this resolution. Implementation of the ordinance will provide clarity for the affordable housing developers as well as staff and develop land. We, we would need to create a process to have the land use restrictions per an agreement so that we can ensure that the affordability is for 30 years or, or more. Okay? So since the new law requires the city to adopt rules and procedures to implement the new law without much guidance, staff is recommending approval of this resolution 2023-204R. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Would any of the audience like to speak to this item? Mr. Manzares.
Thank you, Mr. Manzares. As Melissa pointed out, this resolution essentially is kind of, establishes kind of a placeholder for these projects to allow us to work on the procedures that are necessary required under the statute. And many local governments in the state are working through this, it's changing every day, and so we're working through that. I just want to point out, think, and this is something that I went through this afternoon, just want to clarify. The item that's gonna come back to you for, is, on this particular, excuse me, related to the rules and procedures, will likely not be in ordinance. I think we'll be doing it as a resolution, because I think the, the statute allows us to do it as a resolution. And as you know, doing some things as a resolution will allow them to be modified a little easier, if needed, as opposed to an ordinance. So I think we're gonna move forward in that direction. Thank you.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Yeah, I have just a, a question, because I'm just a novice in this. So we just went over a year's worth of planning for Walker's property. And this is a state mandate, is what I understand, for affordable housing, right? Can the developer now come in and say, listen, we're putting affordable housing on Walker estate? And do we have any say-so in that?
It's not the same zoning.
Yeah, we'd have to look at that. I don't think that, I don't think that that property would meet the criteria of the Live Local.
Okay. That was just, again, a novice question, because it is a state mandate.
Well, only, it's a state mandate only for multifamily projects.
Okay. I just don't know what land is protected, what land is not, where it can be, where it cannot be. Affordable housing, for developer, as mayor said, buys a property, they can do with what they may. And I know that the federal government will subsidize this affordable housing too. So a developer can come in, buy a piece of property, and put three or four-story affordable housing.
But again, there's, there is threshold criteria that, that applies to the property and the project.
I, I'll do more research and...
We'll have, we can give you more information on that if needed.
Thank you, I just don't know. And, and when I don't know, I ask questions, so I, thank you for that answer.
A lot of people have questions on this.
Councilmember Urban.
We have this wonderful zoning map behind us also, so anything in red and gray, or this beige-y mixed-use are, are properties that would be eligible. We'll get you a map.
Those are eligible.
If they were red, the red, gray, and the beige-y color are the, are the, the zonings that are called out by the state.
Councilmember Urban.
I just wanted to thank staff for bringing this forward. It seems like every legislative session, our, our local preempt, we're preempted in some way at the local government level, so I wanted to, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around this as well, so glad we're bringing this forward, thank you.
We have any other discussion? Do we approve this, I assume?
Yes, sir.
All right. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
I have a motion from Councilmember Urban, a second from the mayor, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
The last item, Madam Clerk, could read that.
Discussion and possible action regarding appointments to boards and committees with vacancies for the Historic Preservation Board, Finance Committee, Tree Advisory Committee, and Teen Recreation Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. The first board we will be appointing is Historic Preservation. We are appointing seat seven, which is vacant, at large, one and two, which are all at-large appointments. I would ask the council to please make nominations and then move motion at the end.
I'd like to nominate Carolina Roddy for seat number seven.
Second.
Do, I have a recommendation for alternate number one.
I'll recommend Russell Alexander.
Do I have a nomination for alternate number two?
I'll recommend Gillette, Jelisa Collins.
Roddy Alexander Collins, in that order. Are there any other nominations? If not, I'll make a motion that we adopt these. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Gilbert, Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. The second board would be the Finance Committee, and this is co-terminus, so this would be Councilmember Fletcher's appointment.
The first applicant on our, on our list.
Courtney.
Yes, Courtney.
So who is your nomination?
Courtney.
Courtney. Do I have a motion?
There has been some motion, I think.
Do I have, are you making a motion?
That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
From Councilmember Matheny, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. The third board would be a Tree Advisory Committee, and it is an at-large appointment.
Do we have a motion? Nomination?
I've, I've had the opportunity to work with the Tree Advisory Committee, and it's a great committee, so Cheyenne, would I like to appoint?
We have, do we have any other motions or nominations? If not, we have a motion for you for adoption.
I'll second.
Second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. And then the last board that we have is a Tree, a Teen Recreation Advisory Committee. It is a new board that is co-terminus with each seat, and we only have four applicants at the time.
So, are these nominated per seat?
Yes. So, if you could please make all the nominations first, and then move motion at the end.
I'll nominate Isabella Schmidt for seat number one.
I'll nominate Isabella Vasquez, seat number two.
And I'll nominate Caleb Wright for seat number three.
I'll nominate Carter Rivera.
Seat four.
Seat four.
And I'm sorry you got left out.
Second, oh, I'm sorry. There you go, you got a second.
I'll make a motion that we approve these nominations. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Councilmember Gilbert. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Manzares.
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Our city attorney, Miller.
She promoted you. You just promoted her.
I might like that, I like to pretend I'm a attorney.
I gotta, I gotta look further down the list. City manager, Miller, I'm sorry.
Thank you. First, I'd like to inform the city council that next week, I will be at the International City Manager Association Conference with Mr. Abizmaya Abreu. We will be there in Austin, learning from all the other city managers. We didn't get to go last year because of all the things that were happening at the time, so we're both looking forward to it. Mr. Tomek is going to be in charge during that time.
Wow, we get lots of...
Where's the gavel now?
Additionally, so normally, the evaluations for myself and the city attorney would be the second meeting in October, which, as you know, we canceled because the board will be at the CRA conference. And we can move forward and schedule it for November. However, I'd like to propose a different alternative to the city council. I've had a lot of conversations with you about how the evaluation process works, which currently is that we go to a small conference room and, and meet. Had a conversation with the county manager, and I asked him, you know, what is his formal process? And he says he doesn't have a, a formal process, because as you know, we are at-will every meeting, you know, we hope we're doing really good, and, and we hope that you're telling us every week how we are doing. So I'd like to instead propose that, that the city attorney and I provide you with a report on our accomplishments, and instead, I'd like to meet one-on-one with each of you, so we can have frank conversations. And you can tell me, and separately, you can tell the city attorney what you like, what you don't like, what you think we should be doing differently, and I'd like to see how the council feels about that.
I agree.
I agree too.
We've been trying to get it moved, the mayor and I, when we started, we did it all here publicly, and then we pushed and got it moved. I, I agree. We, I talk with them all the time, I feel like I give them feedback all the time on what's happening.
I personally hate annual evaluations. I think you need to be giving weekly or monthly evaluations.
It'll take any other week.
You sound like my wife right now.
That's daily, yeah, that's daily.
Why in the name of anything would you wait a year until you have an annual evaluation to address a problem? That's what the dice is for, it has to come before the dice anyway, if there's a problem. I certainly think you can be a little more candid and personal with a one-on-one evaluation, and I would certainly recommend that we move to that format. Any other discussion?
I'm all for it.
It looks like there's consensus...
Are we, are we in agreement?
So do I need to do anything more?
No, I think that's fine, we'll just note that we've sort of revised the process a little bit.
I don't think the charter says one way or the other.
It doesn't say one way, and of course...
It's a process.
It's a, it's a process the council can change anytime it wants to change it.
Very good.
Well, we may have to do a little revision with Mrs. Miller's contract, because it's actually contained within her contract, some of the stuff, so.
Let's take a look at that then.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Uh, start to call our mayor. Councilmember Matheny?
Um, just, just, we're all getting, we're all getting promoted today.
Oh, she got demoted.
I just want to ask my fellow council members, I was approached by some representatives from the BMX track, and they've asked if they could come do a short presentation to the city council, because they just feel like no one really knows what all they do, and, and that, and I didn't see a problem with it. Told them keep it short, give a draft, and with a heads-up to the city manager, as far as like what, what's gonna be in the presentation, so there's no surprises, but does anybody have an objection to that?
No, just like for them to have a spot.
All good? Okay. That's it for me.
Councilmember Urban.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Councilmember Fletcher.
I just wanted to remind everybody of the, was it the National Night Out? But the, what was the dates for that?
The third of October.
The third, okay.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Just excited that Coop went from interim to permanent, I didn't know that happened, and that was awesome, and that was great, and... I didn't know that happened, and that was awesome, and that was great, and it's, and go Lions, I'm sorry. Thursday night football, sorry.
What time's the game?
Yeah, I'm recording it, so I can't connect taxes of the sports.
Starts right now.
I don't have anything. So brings us to the information and reports section. Thursday, October the fifth, there'll be a community redevelopment agency meeting at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. Thursday, October the twelfth, there'll be a council meeting at 6:30 PM also here in council chambers. For your review, warrant list number sixteen is available, and there are no items on, on our agenda. We will be adjourned. Thank you.